Good evening, everyone. Like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a minute or two away from starting our meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Overton will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us, many undeserved. We ask that you be with us tonight in our deliberations and ask us to make decisions that will benefit all of our citizens. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. Okay, good. All right. Well, I'd like to again welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, June 27, 2023. And we'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fidjirus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We've got almost a full house and do have a quorum. So item, word item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each regular council meeting that the city council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have any residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, we ask that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that we won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, minutes are approved. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and yes. Can I do one thing real quick first? I need to let our city clerk know to show in the record that I also approve the suspending of the rules at six A and B. We're, we've got some things on here tonight that we're going to do a little different, and this is one of them. So I just wanted to, I need that in the record, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Mayor, in our last committee meeting, we were scheduled to have a discussion of the 2023 street projects, and it was the last item on the committee meeting. As everyone remembers, that committee meeting.
Ran long. And at the end, we all were tired and kind of almost adjourned with, just because we were so tired. And I just made an off-the-cuff remark that we should table that discussion. And when I said it, I said to the council meeting. So it's currently on the agenda as item 16. And I know, I know that some people have indicated there's, I know Brian's not here tonight, even though he's on Zoom. He had indicated that he would really appreciate the opportunity to be in person for that discussion. And so we got three people either on Zoom or missing tonight. So unless anyone has strong objection, and I talked to you and Colby, and it didn't seem like it would hurt to move it to the next committee meeting. So I'll make a motion that we, would that be a table or just move it forward back to committee?
Committee on July 5th.
Just forward it back to committee on July 5th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item seven, we've got a couple of appointments to make, and I'll go ahead and read the resolution. A resolution making appointments to the Springdale Airport Commission of the City of Springdale, Arkansas. You've got the information there for you, and I believe both of them are here tonight. I see Jim. There they are, okay, good deal. And so first of all, I appreciate your willingness to serve. It's a very important position. We've got a great airport, and we look forward to having you all on there.
Move the resolution to pass.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. I'd also, I also would be remiss if I didn't mention and recognize the great service for years of Neil Johnson and Bill Schoonover, who are rotating off the commission. So I know, I know we appreciate their service very much for all those years. And welcome, guys. Appreciate your willingness to serve again. Item eight, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy.
Before we get into these items, I just wanted to show you a couple of pictures of the Miracle League. We're finishing up the replacement of the surfaces on Miracle League. If you haven't been out there, you need to go out there and look at it. They've, you know, we got the, all the equipment. I think the teams will really be excited when they get to play on this this fall, so.
I'm so happy with that. That's really green.
Yeah.
You know, the other one was kind of dark, and this is, this is so much nicer.
And it's a different type of surface. It's more like a ball field. It's a turf. And it's got really good foaming. I think it's going to make a great surface for Miracle League teams. And if you haven't ever been out and worked with the Miracle League group on a ballgame, you need to do that. This is quite an experience.
They'll start up again in the fall.
In the fall, yes. Too hot for them now.
Hey, could you guys make sure we can see that on our Zoom call?
Oh, I can send them to you, Randall. How about that?
Thank you. That'd be perfect.
They're going to see if they can share that screen with you, but if not, we make sure you get them.
Got it now, thank you.
You want me to wait a minute before I go on?
I've got it up here now.
Okay. There's two pictures. Okay. The first item is an amendment to the plan unit development for tonight. Now, I didn't bring the whole document with you. I think y'all will be okay if I don't read the whole thing again. But if you need it to, I do have it with me. But I'll highlight the changes that are, that are being done in this PUD. They're adding citywide uses by right. I think that was just an oversight on all our parts. They're changing, there's a change in the density, the total developed area from 13.91 to 13.86, and that's to do with some dedications right away. They're changing the impervious surface from 7.42 acres to 8.24 acres, and the open space then is six point, from 6.49 to 5.62. The total number of parking spaces required now is 441, and they're providing 441. But basically, they're adding a fitness pavilion to this facility. And in order to do that, they have to come back and get their PUD amendment approved by Planning Commission and by the council. All the other provisions of the PUD remain in place as they were approved with the original PUD. Planning Commission reviewed these amendments and recommends approval of the title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance submitting number, ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from planned unit development PUD to a planned unit development revised PUD and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and ordinance to approve, or motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Anyone in the room need to address this? Okay, Denise.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
The emergency clause will be adopted.
Second.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
And as usual, these all contain emergency clauses because they're actually pending on this, on these projects. In addition to this revision to the PUD, they're asking for a waiver of street improvements along Bob Mills Road. You will see that they don't have any access. All of their access will be from, on the east and west sides of the street. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends that, recommends payment in lieu of improvements. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, and Sidewalks that Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Ramsey at Springdale in Connection with Large Scale 2337." And they are recommending payment in lieu of improvements. The developers still would like to ask for the waiver itself.
So why was this not dealt with previously? Because didn't we just, when was this PUD approved?
This PUD was approved in, I don't remember. Yeah, in late '22. We're just now getting down to getting all the details and all that stuff worked out. So now they're coming back and asking for the waiver.
So they wouldn't have needed to ask for the waiver back then?
Well, if they didn't want to do the improvements, yes, they would have had to. But now they.
So they were agreeable back then, but now they don't want to?
Now they are asking for a waiver of those street improvements along Bob Mills. They're not making any connections to it. As a matter of fact, their detention pond is on that area through there.
But Patsy, when we approved the PUD back in November, they were agreeable to improvements along Bob Mills?
They didn't ask for the waiver at that time.
So they were agreeable to it?
In essence, yes.
Move the resolution to be adopted, option three.
I don't understand why we would back off of something that they agreed to do in the first place.
Well, they're coming back and asking for the waiver. We're recommending that they make payment in lieu of improvements. We get to the same point now. If you deny the waiver, they'll have to build the improvements. That's how it works.
But that's what they said they'd do last November. So that's what, that's the part I'm having trouble with.
Yeah, I, I agree. But, you know, development changes as you go through the design features and get down to construction costs and all that kind of stuff. And I can't explain to you why they came back. I can't keep them from coming back and asking if they want to.
So what about the Planning Commission's recommendation on payment in lieu of?
Well, if they didn't accept it at Planning Commission meeting, they wanted to still ask you guys for the waiver. If you approve it.
Well, my question, though, is that Planning Commission felt like that we might make the improvement someday, but don't need to now? Is that?
That's the option, rather than giving them the waiver. They are recommending that you get payment in lieu of improvements, so it can be done sometime in the future.
If we improve Bob Mills, basically?
When, not if, when. It's not something we give back. The city will retain that. They don't have to worry about it in the future. They can go in and build their project.
Do we have plans for Bob Mills?
I don't think it's on anything we have right now.
We don't have anything right now.
No.
I think development, development will drive that.
There's a lot of development going on in that whole area that's going to have to be addressed with other things as we move forward in the future. Today, it's not so bad. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff going out in this whole area out through here. And that's why payment in lieu of improvements, I think it was engineering's recommendation. It's Planning Commission accepted that recommendation. That's what's to you.
Was that your motion, Mike?
Yes.
To approve the payment in lieu of?
Yes, option three.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson. Bailey.
Carry seven zero, option two.
The next item is a rezoning request for 1.0 acres located at 4985 Elm Springs Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of the ordinance, the title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, roll call, please.
Fidjirus. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
The emergency clause will be adopted.
Second.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Bailey.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
The next request is to rezone two acres located at 372 South 48th Street. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, and the title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room need to speak to this? Okay, Denise.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes. The emergency clause will be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson. Yes.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
The next request is to rezone 0.853 acres located at 4140 OY Road. Request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. Planning Commission recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise.
Lawson. Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
The emergency clause will be adopted.
Second.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
The next request is to rezone property at 1310 Oak Grove Road, 1.82 acres from A1 to O1 and 4.041 acres to C2. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and Neighborhood Office District O1 and declaring an emergency.
Patsy, is O1, is that kind of unusual for, not just go general commercial? Why would, why would you have O1 on office?
O1 is an office or a residence, kind of serves as a buffer to those residential areas to the north. And it can be a structure that's commercial, can't be larger than 5,000 square feet, has to look residential in style.
Move the ordinance to be adopted. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve. Questions, comments? Anyone? Right, Denise.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
The next item is a request to, for a waiver of sidewalks in connection with a construction of a single-family home at 6774 East Wagon Wheel Road. Planning Commission reviewed the waiver request and recommends approval. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Streets, Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, and Sidewalks that Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Ryan and Sarah McLean in connection with 6774 East Wagon Wheel Road, a single-family dwelling."
Move the resolution to pass.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Option one.
Option one. Your second, okay. All right, anyone speak to it? Okay, roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
And the next item on your agenda was a waiver for a sidewalk in connection with Seven Brew on East Robinson. The developer agreed to make payment in lieu of improvements. And so it really doesn't have to go to the council because if the Planning Commission recommends it and they approve it, then it doesn't have to go to council.
So you're saying there's no action necessary?
No action taken because the Planning Commission approved it, and they agreed to make payment in lieu of. So there's no action to take.
Okay. That ends our planning report. Item nine, Finance Committee and Chairwoman Amelia Williams is not with us tonight. So who would like to take that? Anyone?
I'll take it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
We have a number of resolutions, Mayor. The first was a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a charitable donation agreement authorizing the purchase of property for the expansion of Bluff Cemetery. And this is moved forward with a recommendation for approval. Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Just for those that might not know, this is Gary and Rob and George have agreed to purchase. How many acres is it?
A little over seven.
A little over seven acres adjacent to Bluff Cemetery that will allow the city to expand that cemetery. And we're very appreciative of that. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Was it like 7,000?
700 and.
700?
Yeah, it's over 700,000.
I mean, the lots.
Oh, oh, there was a.
7,000 lots, I believe, wasn't it?
I think it was, is it, is it that many, James?
Between 7 and 8,000.
Between 7 and 8,000 plots that we believe we can get in that area. So great benefit to our, to the residents of our community. All right, roll call, please.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Carry seven zero.
Next item we have is a, is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract for architectural services to, to, uh, continue the tacky design of a fire station.
Just for clarification, I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for architect services. Uh, we batched the votes on the committee, but, uh, we're gonna separate these tonight for a vote, uh, because they're coming out of different funds. Uh, the first one is fire station number four. The council approved the purchase of property, um, uh, over near Guttenson and, uh, Elm, uh, Elm Springs Road, uh, and Huntsville Road. This is the fire station rebuild of, of four. It's gonna go on that property. This will be paid for out of the general fund. The fee is five percent, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We did add a price not to exceed on this contract, um, and we did confirm, uh, with Mr. Lack that the architectural firm will give us, uh, several options for the exterior of, of this, uh, fire station.
At the same price? Is that true on both of...
Yes, sir.
On that next resolution as well?
Yes, sir.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the resolution. This is nine B. Uh, anyone need to speak to this? Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Next resolution is, uh, also a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for architectural services.
This is the fire station number ten. The difference in this resolution is this will be paid for out of our bond funds for the two thousand twenty-three bond.
The resolution pass.
Motion to second? Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right.
The final resolution is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize federal aid funds for, uh, trail feasibility for Watkins Avenue, Cambridge and Guttenson Road, South and South Pleasant.
Patsy, do you have anything to a- add to this? Or clarification for those who, maybe those in the room that...
The only clarif- the only clarification I have is that we clarified with the highway department that it is the feasibility study only, and even if we don't go to construction of the streets, we don't have to pay the money back.
Okay.
Because that's usually what you have to pay back, but this, that stipulation will be added to the contract.
All right, thank you. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Resolution be adopted.
We got a motion to second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Recuse.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six zero, one recusing.
Uh, final, uh, resolution is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to apply for, uh, STBGP-a funding for construction of Don Tyson Parkway from Gene George Boulevard to Highway one twelve.
Move the resolution by.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room need to speak to this one? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item ten, health sanitation and property maintenance. Chairman Jeff Watson, Jeff?
Yes, sir. The Health Sanitation Property Maintenance Committee, uh, considered recommendation from the mayor's appointed committee that studied and, and evaluated the waste, uh, disposal contracts and, uh, forwarded the, forwarded, uh, this ordinance to council with recommendation for approval. I'll read the title to the ordinance, and then I'll ask Colby to discuss that a little bit. The title to the ordinance is "An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of a Municipal Solid Waste Collection, Transportation, and Disposal Contract with Cards NWA LLC for the Provision of Collection, Recycling, Composting, Transfer, and Disposal of Solid Waste in the City of Springdale, Arkansas."
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Got a motion to second to approve the ordinance. Questions, comments? Go ahead, Colby, and get us started in case we have any comments.
Sure, I want to take a moment to introduce Lynn Lantrop. If you'll come and join me up here. Lynn flew in from Texas. He's the gentleman that we hired, uh, with his company, uh, to help us walk through this process, and he's done a fantastic job. We included the presentation in your packets again. Uh, I sent a couple of emails with clarifications. He's gonna be able to answer more of your questions. Uh, and we also have representatives from the company that, uh, was recommended to you if we need to answer any other questions from them as well.
Thank you, Colby. Lynn Lantrop, mayor and counsel. I've met some of you and very pleased, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We, uh, Colby and I discussed whether or not we need to go through the whole presentation. Certainly, I will do it if you need me to do so.
No.
Amen. Uh, I would just tell you, it was a good, uh, football game, and I commend the judges within Springdale that, uh, staff selected because they were rigorous, and I made this comment at the committee meeting last week. We, I'm blessed to tell you that you are our nineteenth customer in four and a half years. We're very pleased with that. I've never had judges that were this intense and read every word and tested every word, and questions were forthcoming. So by the time we had the interview, a first verse as well, uh, there were three pages of, uh, questions from the judges that we put each of the firms through those paces to narrow down, narrow down, and there was a, an apparent winner just from the numerical aspect of it, and that was Cards, but they still had to pass that muster, and it was a rigorous muster. So I will be glad to answer any questions that you have on the process. Uh, I wasn't one of the judges. I'm not taking credit for the great job that they did. Any questions for Lynn? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance.
Do you want to take comments?
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna open it up to the room if there's anyone else that has any questions. All right, going once, going twice. Roll call, please.
Didgerouse?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six one. Move the or- uh, emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Actually, we didn't need one.
That's right, because it's December when it's, uh, never mind. Excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, and Lynn, I'll, I'll, uh, just let me say that, uh, I, I was having a conversation with one of our council members up here, and what a, what a great job you've done, and we really appreciate your help.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to serve you, and I appreciate all the support I got from everybody who was involved.
Yeah, thanks for flying up here today. I know it wasn't eas- it didn't go as planned, so, uh, so thank you. All right, um, we're to the committee as a whole, counsel. Uh, would anyone in particular like to take that, or, uh, well, this has people, certain people presenting, so, Mike, if you want to take that first one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the first one, Mayor. Uh, the first one is a resolution, uh, after a real short discussion at the committee meeting, it was forwarded to council for recommendation for approval. It's a resolution authorizing expenditure funds to provide temporary speed tables and our cushions on Lakeview Drive.
And let me, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I was just gonna say, uh, because I know we've got some residents from, from that area here. Um, I, I met with Ben Peters, our engineer, uh, last week, and I, you know, I, I've been reluctant on this because I, I don't think it's a cure-all and, but I hope I'm wrong, and so I don't have a better idea. So we're gonna go ahead and install for one year, uh, two speed tables, uh, to be placed at our city engineer's discretion, and, and, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll see how it goes. We'll evaluate it for a year, and, uh, and at the same time, we're also gonna look at some other solutions. If, if this, if this isn't the solution, or if it turns out y'all really don't like this, then maybe we'll have some other ideas by, after a year. So we'll try that. I do, I do have to say, though, and counsel, you'll do what you want to do with this resolution. You've got a motion and a second. But I think it's important, uh, as mayor to make clear that this resolution is not necessary. Uh, I can, I need to make that clear because when I spend ten thousand dollars and I don't bring a resolution forward, I need everybody to remember that I can do that. So, uh, y'all do what you will with this, but I just want to, I needed to have it on the record that, that this is, uh, that I can do this. The mayor, not I, but that the mayor in this situation, uh, in the city of Springdale can spend ten thousand dollars as long as the money's in the budget and it's for the, it's for an approved purpose, so.
Mayor, I want to apologize for getting a little testy over there. It's against my nature, you know? It's completely against my nature. But thank you. You've already, you've already did the stop signs and stuff.
Right, and I hope that's helping some. I hope that's making some difference.
I hope it does. I, I don't know of anything else to do. I'm kinda like you. I'm a, I'm at a loss, but anyway, thank you.
Mayor, I will say, uh, I snuck in over the other night. I don't know if Jan knew it or not, but I snuck in to Todd Sutcher's front porch, and I witnessed some of this deal. And I found out I was there on a very mild evening, and it was still quite entertaining. So I think anything we do out there will be...
Well, maybe somebody will lose their rear action. You know, we'll, we'll see. If they do, they deserve it.
Hopefully, one of those simis is going through there.
We sat on the front porch for about an hour, and I have to say, it was...
Yeah, that may be next. Okay, well, uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment before we vote?
I just want to make sure that these are signed appropriately for the public as you're driving down through there.
What'd he say?
Say that one more time, Brian.
I just want to make sure that these are signed appropriately.
Speed bumps are signed.
Yes.
Okay.
Warnings.
Okay, we will do that, and, and James also, you know, I, I don't know exactly, you've still gotta order them, correct? When we were putting them on during, it was right in the m- middle of that supply chain crisis we were all going through everywhere, and it took a while, but we believe this will be faster. You don't have an answer yet, do you, James? But we will get them up as soon as we can get them here and, uh, and get them in, so. All right, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you, Mike. Um, can you go up there, please, Jan? We're on, uh, you'll be, you, you want to be on YouTube?
No, I don't. I just, clarification, because of the one-year thing? I'm sorry, I didn't ask it at the discussion time, but I didn't think of it till just now.
That's okay.
Um, so who determines at the end of one year? Are you gonna ask us for a report on how it's going?
I think we'll, we'll be in contact with you all and see if it, look, if it's working, we're all happy. So, so, but if, if there's, if it's not, and, you know, there, there's a very real possibility some of y'all might not like it either, and you may want to...
We're gonna like it, I promise.
Okay, and you may, you may want to look at something else. We may have other options, but if not, we'll keep them.
The only thing that we're not gonna like it, there's only two, but if you've got extra money after you buy those two and you want to put another one or two, we'd be real happy about that.
It's a two-hundred percent improvement over what you got, so.
It's wonderful, and let me just say, on behalf of these people, we are beyond grateful that you're trying this for us.
Okay.
And I want to, I want to publicly thank the police officers. I'm telling you, they are, they have been fabulous to try to help mitigate it, but we'll see, and thank you, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jan, and let me, let me say one more thing that, that could help us in the future. And y'all might not like this either. In the past, until a few years ago, the state of Arkansas could electronically monitor and read speed, read license plates, and this would have been so much easier on our police department if we could have had a contraption out there that we could have ticketed people without the police having to physically be there. Uh, a few years ago, Ernest, was it two sessions ago, or?
I think it might have been three.
Three sessions ago, maybe, the state legislature passed a law outlawing that type of enforcement in the state of Arkansas. So I, I'm not thinking so much about Lakeview now as I am all the other places that we're going to get requests for speed tables. And, and it could help us tremendously to use technology in that way, uh, without having to pull police officers to actually physically sit in an area to watch for speeders and, uh, or people running stop signs. There's, there's some things about that that I just don't like, but, you know, it's a little Big Brother-ish, but it is, we do have the ability to do that, and if it, if it means safety for an area and helps us address safety in an area, then I think it's important, and I, I apologize. I've got a call in actually to Steve Unger, because Steve was here during committee, and I'll reach out to him again. I, I may have, he may not have gotten my message asking him to call, but I wanted to discuss that with him and see if that's something that we may want to work together on to try and get, get before, uh, get before the next legislative session, and... Okay, well, that explains that. So I'll get with Steve when he gets back and some of our other legislators and see if anybody's got an interest in helping us carry that, and I know our police department would support that, right, Frank? Okay, thank you, and, uh, and, and we'll see, but there are some other things like that that could be done that could help us in a lot of areas. If, uh, if the legislator, if the legislature would pass something like that and put it back in place for the state of Arkansas. All right? So thank you all for being here tonight, and, uh, we hope this, we hope this does the trick. All right, thanks. Well, thank you all. Yeah, listen, listen, y'all have been great, and thank you for your patience. I know it took longer than anybody wanted. Uh, item, uh, item twelve, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Sales and Use Tax Refunding and Improvement Bonds for the Purpose of Financing and Refinancing the Cost of Capital Improvements, Pledging Collections of a One Percent Sales and Use Tax to Pay the Principal of and Interest on the Bonds, Prescribing Other Matters Relating thereto and Declaring an Emergency." And Shep Russell is here from Friday Law Firm, if you have any questions, and, uh, and I, I, I know that we have both Cruz and Stevens represented here by Bob Wright and Kevin Fott, and, uh, if you have any other questions for them also, so I'm gonna give it to you, Shep.
Yes, I, I prepared the ordinance that's before you, uh, that authorizes, uh, these bonds that were approved by the voters, uh, at the May election, and, uh, I'm gonna give Bob Wright the opportunity to explain what the, uh, interest rates are, so.
Thank you, Bob. Shep?
Thanks, Shep. Y'all been moving so quick, leave it up to the banker to bring it to a grounding halt. For the, I'll be real quick. Uh, for the two, for, uh, Councilman Harriman and, and Powell that are on the phone, I did not, it, it's been a long day. I had time to print this out, and, and you do have a printed copy for your file. When you get back, I do not have anything, uh, to put up on the screen. The, the handout is the same information that we've shown y'all the last couple of times. We've been putting this all together. There's a couple of things I do want to point out. Um, in, in this process, once you approve going to the voters, and the voters overwhelmingly approve this, uh, the, this tax to, uh, pledge to new projects and to the refunding. We've been working, uh, very hard, Kevin and I, with the mayor, with staff, um, meeting with, uh, and calls with standard reporters on their credit rating, uh, and brought that in, a, a very strong A-plus credit rating. Uh, we got that secured. Uh, also worked with the mayor and staff and secured bond insurance, uh, which further enhances the credit, lowers the interest rate. Uh, and what it did by being able to secure that added about sixteen million to your streets. Um, so we've been busy on those aspects. Last week, pre-pricing, yesterday, pre-priced meeting with, uh, uh, with the mayor and, and staff. Went into the order period this morning, uh, on, uh, the three-hundred-plus-million-dollar transaction. I opened that up at nine o'clock. We were expecting, uh, quite a few orders, and, and the one thing that I've added to this handout that y'all have not seen before, and if you'll flip over to page four, I did label these, uh, numbers, I included the actual orders that came in this morning, uh, in, in total par amount, and you'll see quite a few names on there. I think what it says, it, it speaks well to the city of Springdale. You've been out in the market a number of times. You've done very well. They see the, the, the growth in the city. You see what the city has done with the proceeds, um, of the, of the various bond issues we've done in the past. To have this amount of orders on your transaction and all throughout the country in some of the big names, you can see Mackay Shields, Conseco, Blackrock, Wells, uh, Newburger, Guggenheim, Mass Financial, Vanguard, Franklin Templeton, um, Hancock, uh, Baird out of Milwaukee, uh, Cincinnati Financial, uh, local banks, Malvern National Regions, First Arkansas Bacon Trust, Arvest, Farmers and Merchants, Bank of the Ozarks. So a, a, a very wide, um, display of, of people that wanted to invest in, in the city of Springdale. The last line on page five, retail individuals, uh, over three million dollars in mom and pop, buying five and ten at a time, investing in the city of Springdale. Most of those were here locally, um, in northwest Arkansas, investing in their town. Total of nine-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollars of orders. So almost a billion dollars' worth of money that wanted to invest in the city of Springdale, and that speaks well to, to what you've done. The, the end result, uh, and, and the main thing to look at, as you'll recall, on page nine, uh, the voters approved refunding the two thousand twenty bond issue in the two thousand eighteen. By refunding that two thousand and twenty and putting that tax under one umbrella, capital penny, over the next nine years, that's gonna generate close to fifty million dollars back toward the general fund. That releases that, um, that general penny that was pledged to the debt goes back to the general fund. It's over five million dollars per year that will no longer have to go towards that bond issue. Um, fully funding the parks of fifteen million, fully funding the senior center of fifteen million, fully funding the fire, uh, projects at seven million, and then it all waterfalls over to how much can we generate towards streets? When we showed y'all, starting back in January, we were around ninety-four, ninety-five million in streets, uh, locked in today, and this is without interest earnings, and, and you know, with short-term rates are up, we're gonna earn a, a good amount in, in interest on this, but we're gonna deposit into the street on August tenth, when we close, one hundred and five-point-three-nine million, uh, to go toward street projects. So that's the end result of, uh, of all of those orders, kind of lowering the rate, chasing some of those away to where we ended up with these final results. Uh, the ordinance that, that Shep has prepared and presented to you lays that all out. Uh, with your approval tonight, we'll be working on final documentation from now until August tenth, and on the, on the tenth, we will, uh, coordinate in New York and close the transaction, pay those two bond issues off that day, no longer an obligation of the city, um, and then the new money will be deposited, uh, that morning.
And the final interest rate?
Final interest rate on, uh, on a combined would be on page ten. And if you look down below the yield statistics, true interest cost, and, because some of the, the refunding had to be issued on a taxable rate basis, and the new money was issued on tax exempt, so that combined rate, when you factor in all the costs and such, four-point-eight-six percent. So still sub-five percent historically, uh, it, very good, uh, result for your, uh, for your citizens, for your taxpayers. Not obviously quite as low as we were, uh, a, a year or so ago, um, but we probably, the, the absolute lowest of the low is probably around four and a half percent, um, all, all in combined, so we're not far off, you know, off the, the bottom of that. So all in all, really good results. Um, a, a lot of investors that did not get their orders allocated, uh, are not happy, but that's, that's on us and, and Stevens, uh, to handle that. But, um, very good reception, had no problems whatsoever.
All right, I, thank you, Bob. Okay.
Move the ordinance be passed.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Uh, let me say, and I, and I know I speak for the council, when I say this too, that, uh, none of this would have been possible without the strong support of the residents and the voters of Springdale, so, so we certainly ultimately want to thank them too, but thank you guys for all your work on this, and, uh, and we look forward to really, uh, putting this, this money to good use for our residents.
Well, I, I speak for Kevin as well. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with the city. Uh, we've worked with you all for, for a number of years, and we certainly appreciate that, that opportunity.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. Anybody else in the room? Okay, roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Did I understand it correctly that the bond, uh, attorney is doing this pro bono?
Yes.
I thought so, yes.
Was that a yes? Okay.
After that affirmative, we're small, yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
The ordinance carries seven zero, five in the room, two on Zoom, and the emergency clause carries seven zero.
And Denise, please let the record show that the mayor would have voted in affirmative on both of those, on both the, the ordinance and the emergency clause. That's right, I can't vote on emergency clause anyway. I wouldn't have voted on the emergency clause.
But we had five in the room that voted for the order.
Okay, good deal. Thank you all. Okay, I'll turn the next one over to our city attorney.
Kind of a tough act to follow, but, uh, the next item is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to vacate a portion of Putnam Street. This would set the public, public hearing for July twenty-fifth, and we will bring an ordinance forward at that time as well, and the city clerk will advertise the, uh, public hearing. If you may remember, I think in twenty-twenty-two, we vacated the northern part of this street, and now the request is to vacate the remainder south to Price. This would just set the public hearing date.
Move the resolution pass. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry seven zero. The next item is a resolution authorizing the destruction of old district court records pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated sixteen-dash-eleven-dash-two-eleven. These are all district court, uh, records that have been back in the Allen Building that the staff has taken quite a, quite a bit of time. They've gone through it all, and they've determined they've got a list, uh, attached to the resolution of those, uh, documents that are eligible for destruction.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero, and the last one is a resolution authorizing the destruction of old police department records pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen-dash-two-dash-two-oh-one, and they've done a fantastic job as well of identifying those records that are eligible for destruction, and there's a list attached to the resolution.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Uh, roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Didgerouse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes. Yes.
Watson?
Yes.[1682.84]